This meeting has come to order.
Yes.
Today is Tuesday, April 25th, 2017. This is a study session for the Prescott City Council. Roll call, please.
Mayor Oberg?
Here.
Mayor Protam Lamerson?
Here.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lozelle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Orr?
Here.
Councilwoman Siska?
Here.
Councilwoman Walcox?
Here.
All present.
We're transgender.
We have three items for discussion today, and one's on streets and one's on water, so I'll be asking for public comment. And we might even ask for public comment on legislative update, but I don't think we have too many items there. First item, please.
3A, Presentation on the Pavement Preservation Program.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. We'll be providing a quick update on the pavement preservation program. I'll start things off and discuss what the program is, what it's supposed to do, and also talk very briefly about what the program's not supposed to do. Then I'll turn it over to Steve Guizo. He's the city's construction supervisor and pavement preservation program manager, and he'll get into some of the details as far as the tools that we have in our tool chest as far as pavement preservation. He'll talk about costs, and also he'll also bring to your attention what the anticipated projects coming up as far as fiscal '18, what streets and neighborhoods we're planning on looking at and doing. Just really briefly, pavement preservation, essentially it's strategies to keep your pavement good, and I'm going to say that really again and again, because that's really the critical piece of pavement preservation. It's not doing the worst street out there. It's about keeping what you have that is good in good condition. Because if you look at the strategy, we only have so much funding, we have a lot of lane miles, we have a lot of roadways, a lot of streets. It's very cost-effective to keep what you have good, good, and then address that remove and replace. Because if you're into a, if you have to remove the asphalt and the subgrade and the subbase and put asphalt, that's a lot of money, and you don't ever want to get to that point. So it's pavement preservation program. You want to catch the road before it gets to that level. So keeping good asphalt, good. In practical terms, pavement preservation means the right treatment to the right road at the right time. Again, we need to keep our roads structurally sound. Again, that feeds back into keeping the roadways good, you know, making sure that, because again, the pavement preservation treatments that we have are very cost-effective when you look at it. And if you don't catch it in time, it'll get into a mill fill. That's going to cost you a lot more money. And then if you don't do anything about it, you'll get to a remove and replace, which is very, very expensive. And again, Steve will get into the numbers for you. Payment maintenance activities address aging, oxidation, surface deterioration, normal wear and daily wear and tear. So that's what it addresses. Again, pavement maintenance, pavement preservation is to extend the life of what you have. The roadways are an asset. Currently, there's 679 lane miles here in the city of Prescott, and we did a quick calculation, and we're not including water, we're not including sewer, just roadway and curb, concrete, that type of stuff. And to replace it, it's approximately $600 to $800 million. So that's a big investment that we have in our roadway networks. As I stated before, the pavement preservation program, it's not meant to fix the worst street. For example, so you want to keep those streets looking good. If the street is so bad that it has to be removed and replaced next year, it's still going to have to be removed and replaced. And basically, in five years, hate to say this, it's still going to be removed and replaced. It's going to cost a lot of money. So we can address those streets through our capital improvement program, right? Get those streets into the program and come before you with a list of streets that are beyond pavement preservation. It's often misunderstood. We get a lot of calls, I've gotten calls, "What are you guys doing? That street was perfect." And I said, "Well, what street is that?" And they're like, "Well, we just put a fog seal." That's a pavement preservation is basically a very thin layer of oil, because pavement needs to be remain flexible. Again, it's maintaining what you have, it's making sure that good pavement is good. So a lot of people say, "There's nothing wrong with that roadway." And how we address that is, I think, with education. Tell them, "We need to, you need to maintain it," just like changing your oil. Yeah, well, you got oil. Yeah, but it's dirty. You really need to change it. With pavement preservation, you know, the asphalt gets dry, and you need to oil it. And there's different things that we can apply to make sure that asphalt stays flexible. Again, removing everything and replacing is not part of the pavement preservation program. Removing and replacing is very expensive. You don't want to get to that point. It impacts residents for long periods of time. So even with a pavement preservation project, you're impacting people and businesses, but if you go into that remove and replace, that's months and months of impact, and we don't want to get there. Or, you know, ultimately, you will on any street, but it's all about getting as much life out of the asphalt as possible with least cost. With that said, I'd like to introduce Steve Guizo. Have him come up here. Steve's been with the city for six years. He's been in the industry for 28 years, primarily in geotechnical and asphalt. He's worked in Arizona, California, Nevada. He continues to take training, because, you know, it's a changing industry, asphalt. There's new things that come up, and he'll talk a little bit about the new things that he's done, kind of testing to see how well it works, because they're very cost-effective. Thank you.
Okay, we have a question, comment from the Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor. Charles?
Yes.
And just before we get in with Steve, et cetera, just for edification, let's go back over the process a little bit.
Sure.
That has to do with where does the money come from to fix our streets, to maintain our streets? And the mechanisms that were put in place so that this community, for one of the more basic of the services, that being roads, would have adequate dollars to help fund what's a very basic need in this community, and that's safe streets.
Yes.
And that money comes from where?
My understanding is it comes from the one cent sales tax?
One cent sales tax. So the community saw the wisdom in making sure there was money necessary that was available to this community to maintain our streets, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm going to go through a few slides here with you briefly. My presentation's a little more technical than Charles', so I won't dwell on some of the technical aspects, but the pavement preservation and rehabilitation project is meant to, as Charles said, extend that life of that pavement that we have down. Normal pavements last in the 15- to 20-year range with minimal maintenance. We're looking to extend that life to as much as double and even more, depending on, you know, the traffic loads, the area it's placed in, our weather conditions, things like that all play factors in how long our roads will last. As a brief, a rule of thumb, we start out with 100 on a scale of 0 to 100 for our pavements. Pavements deteriorate about three points per year, and depending on, you know, if it's one of our major roadways, it gets plowed every year, our sun, our weather conditions, things like that, it may deteriorate a little faster, whereas something in a residential street may deteriorate even slower. So, you know, we try and catch most of the streets around here before a PQI, which is a pavement quality index of 70 or greater. Therefore, we're enhancing and prolonging that pavement for years to come at a substantially less cost. Pavement rehabilitation starts at 70 and below and goes down to roughly a PQI of 40. In that range, we're typically looking at a mill and fill type of operation. You may have some areas within that roadway that may need a section of it removed and replaced. It still falls within that 70 to 40 range, but we'll do minor repairs and then do a mill and fill, and we'll get substantial life out of that roadway before we have to go to a complete removal. Eventually, all road lanes, roadways will require a complete removal. We're trying, we're shooting for 40 or more years as an average throughout the city before we have to do that. The way to do that is through preservation. If we don't preserve it and keep preserving it, the asphalt has a tendency to, once it's past a certain point, to degrade more rapidly as it gets older. Last year, and we're just now finishing up, we did approximately 63 lane miles, roadways, for a cost of $4.7 million. There has been some roadways within the city that fell into the reconstruction zone that cost that much for one mile. So as you can see, it's a significant cost. City is currently working on implementation in the Lucidity System for the asphalt portion of it. The IT department just spent an enormous amount of time entering all the data for the streets. Now our next step is going to be to take that data, verify in the field, and then that way we can get a better handle on our assets, what exactly our assets are, what condition they're in, and then we can come up with a better game plan on how to preserve those assets in the future. This slide here is just a typical performance curve for asphalt to kind of give you a visual of how asphalt deteriorates over time, and a rough representation of the cost of each treatment or reconstruction, if you will. As you all know, with the volatile costs of oils and things like that, these numbers are, fluctuate greatly from year to year. Right now, it's month to month or day to day. So this is just to try and give you a sense of, you know, the cost and what, how much it goes up over time. This here is a chart and a graph to show you if we preserve it and keep carrying that good asphalt out. We can carry it out for many years and spend a lot less on our roadways than we would if we let it go, just to a pavement reconstruction scenario. If we did maintenance every five years at roughly a cost of anywhere from $7,000 to a little over $40,000 per mile, it would give us a maintenance cost of $56,000 to a little over $330,000 in 40 years. If we were to let that same roadway go and just come in and do a reconstruction at 20 years and then at 40 years, that cost would be $1 to $3 million per lane mile, and over 40-year span would be $2 to $6 million. Therefore, potential savings by maintaining that same roadway, we'd look at $940,000 to over $5.5 million in savings per mile. That's quite a substantial savings cost for the city. This is a list of some of the pavement preservation techniques we use now. There are some more that aren't on this list, and there are more coming out every day. Some of the latest seminars and training classes I've gone to, they're coming up with new stuff all the time to help preserve roadways. We're not the only city that's feeling this. The federal government, as a matter of fact, is actually requiring maintenance on their roadways as part of their contracts to preserve that pavement for longer periods of time. So we're not, it's not new. It may be new to us, but we're trying different methods to see what works better here because of our situation, our elevation, our fluctuations in temperatures and seasons and plowing and, you know, we're not the same as Phoenix, of course, so we're doing a lot of things to try and help our roadways last a lot longer.
What are micros?
I'm sorry?
What are micros?
Microseals are a thin layer of asphalt and aggregates, sand or maybe small aggregates that are mixed together and then laid on the roadway to give a wearing course and a prolong the life of the actual asphalt beneath it. Of course, a number one reason for doing this is safety, provide a safe, well-maintained roadway for the public. Protecting the asset at a cost of $1 to $6 per square yard delays the costly need for rehabilitation at four to 10 times its cost, and reconstruction at 20 to 40 or more, depending on, you know, how bad or how severe that roadway is. This is a brief list of the FY '18 pavement preservation program. Some of the roads are listed here. We're going to be working in the Regional Air Park area, Antelope Hills, Center Point. We're going to do another section of Willow Creek Road and some other miscellaneous roads around the city. We are currently in design right now at 30% plans, so this will fluctuate slightly depending on funding and treatments that we're going to do. This slide here is just to give a visual of how we're working within the city. As you can see, we're from north to south and east to west. We try and spread it out and cover as many roadways as we possibly can and keep, again, the good roadways good. And with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Mayor Protam? Thank you very much. Um, yeah. Steve?
Yes.
You talked about assets and the record that we would do to record the condition that the roads are in, and at the same time, I would assume, you know, none of us like to assume very much, but I would assume we also record the liabilities. So now we have a record of things that we maybe are in need of repair also.
Correct.
Not just the ones that we need to say, "Oh, yeah, we got a pretty good road over here." What brings to mind something of that nature is the quality of the road that's out in front of City Hall here, or the quality of Bradshaw, or some of these roads that have been in the city for a long time. And at some point, my intuition, for example, would give me cause to say, "You know what? Maybe we've got some sort of cause now for somebody to say, 'Well, you guys had a record of this not being in great shape. Why didn't you do anything about it?'" Can you respond to that?
Uh, yes, there are roads in the city that are in disrepair. However, addressing all the worst first approach is very expensive and will eventually leave you behind the curve, because you're not preserving your good roads, you're not keeping those good roads good. It's much cheaper to keep the good roads good and then fit in, when you can, bad roads that are already bad, that are going to stay bad, they're not going to get any better, and wait till your funding is appropriate to do that particular street. Now, there's a lot of different factors that come into play, location, traffic counts, you know, weather, there's all kinds of different factors that can play into when a certain road is or isn't repaired and/or maintained. So the new program will better track that stuff, but, you know, you kind of have to weigh against your options.
It's correct, thanks. Perhaps a different answer, I understand, Councilman Lamerson, we have limited amount of money, but we do realize the liability part. Road conditions sometimes are unpredictable. When something happens that we know it is a danger for safety, we address it immediately. May not be a good permanent fix, but we make sure that that is taken care of so the city would not be liable. And I think this is perhaps, our city attorney can respond as well. The issues we have are not unique to the city of Prescott. All over the nation, there are usually more needs than there is money. And I believe, once you try your very best to do what you can with the money you have, you're not quite following, Mr. Attorney, am I partially correct on that one?
Yeah, I can echo that, Mayor and Council. I think the distinction is between a road that is not in great shape and a hazard, a hazard to either property, you know, vehicles, or to people, bicyclists, that kind of thing. And a road in bad condition may not necessarily be a hazard, it may be an uncomfortable drive, it may be bumpy or bouncy, but it doesn't pose a hazard. So we, you know, with our risk management division, we will work with streets to do, you know, to make sure that they're aware of potholes or hazardous conditions, and I would suggest within a day, often, if somebody's out there patching, to mitigate the hazard. Still not in great shape over the long term, but we mitigate the hazard so it minimizes any potential damage to either property or people. And I think that's, that's sort of, a lot of times that's a patchwork and as needed versus repairing a, you know, Alarcan being an example, probably wasn't hazardous, but it was in bad shape. And so that project is a long-term or long process to go. Didn't necessarily pose a hazard, but it certainly was bouncy, I could testify to that.
Thank you both for your answers, but as you know, all seven of us sitting up here get queried from time to time from different people for different reasons, and it's nice to have some of the ammunition in our, I don't know, footlocker of things to say, "Well, you know what? That's not a hazard. It may be uncomfortable, but it's not posing a hazard."
And correct me if I'm wrong, I think there is a number that people can call, a hotline of sorts, where if there is a, for potholes and, you know, not every pothole's necessarily a hazard either. I mean, and obviously with the weather here, there have been examples where a pothole exists, the monsoon happens, it gets bigger, goes out and patches, the monsoon happens, it gets bigger, and it's kind of a back and forth, back and forth.
Like that?
Like, yeah, you know, yeah, that's...
There's a pretty big fish in there.
That's by design. Sometimes when you, we've seen this where the crews will go out and do a repair, and they'll sort of have to remove, you know, clean up the pothole, refill it with, you know, with asphalt, and then it rains within an hour or two hours because of the summer monsoons, and it just washes all the way again. And so it'll get bigger and bigger and bigger, and we've actually seen that where literally someone's tire fell off. I mean, it happens, you know, and I think the climate here is more prone to happen here than, say, valley. You know, and some of that is obviously preventable, and sometimes it, you know, you do your best, but you can't, you can't fix it with the way the monsoons happen some summers. It just washes it out, and we've seen it. And when that happens, if it's something we know about and it's something that we're, you know, that we're at fault for, then, you know, that's why we have, you know, insurance and deductibles and those kinds of things, and we've actually paid people for those kinds of property damages. To my knowledge, we haven't had any personal injuries as a result of things like potholes and things like that, but we've had a few, you know, vehicle damage things, and if we know about it and we've either failed to repair it or tried to repair it, you know, we will pay for the damage if it's a city fault, like, you know, if we have a responsibility.
Thank you, John.
If I may add, Councilman, I have been in places where money is very limited, especially when you're working for the county. We have had rough roads, even unsafe, because of lack of funding. There's signs in there that are rough and bumpy road, and those signs stayed there for three, four, five years. So basically, alert the drivers, be careful, this is not your 60 mile per hour road, although the sign used to say that. They're fortunate. I just want to add something else. I appreciate the fact that you brought up, and we are grateful for the support of our citizens for the one cent road tax. What this does really allow us to do the basic. We are currently about $80 million in a backlog in our road system, and with the one cent road tax, that $80 million will continue to go up. Just need to say that. We have roughly, again, we're working on to about $9, $9.5 million of road fund that we have, with your discretion over it. Out of this $9, $10 million, we had this current year $4.8 million for pavement pres. We don't have that for next year. We are proposing $3.5 million, which I'm very uncomfortable with, because, as you heard from the two previous speakers, pavement pres is so important to keep it. But when you have only $9 million, $9.5 million, and that would give us minus the $3.5 million, $4 or $5 million, that gives us at most one project, one capital project to do. Right here in downtown, I bet we got a good $70, $80 million project pending, and I know it's your direction and your philosophy, we have a wonderful take care of downtown, but there's so many other roads away from downtown that need work. And the last thing I want to say then, and I know you're all very supportive of us, but you get calls all the time from our citizens. Everything we do, our intent is to do our best, but our fixes are not the best. They don't make the road perfect. They make it just good to last a little longer. People sometimes don't appreciate chip seal because they want asphalt a nice, smoother ride. And we do know sometimes when we do the chip sealing, and it has been a lot of discussion, especially with Mayor Protam, you see cracks. We know it. We know this kind of treatment, you will see cracks, and our job is to go there a year, year and a half later to do the crack sealing. Sometimes the treatment didn't work as we want it to. I just wanted to put all of your mind at ease that the staff is aware, we are watchful, and we are right on top of the contractor and anything to make the correction at no extra cost to the city. Staff is well aware, and we have some of the best people I've worked with, so you hear from people, but we also know it, and we are working on it. Example, we have had a couple recently.
Thank you, Henry.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Orr?
Thank you. Could you go back to the slide where you show the projects that are listed?
This one, yes. This is over what length of time?
This project?
These list?
These listed will be in the next FY '18, fiscal year '18, preservation and rehabilitation project, so we'll probably go out to bid in July or so and then award shortly thereafter. And so in the next six months or so, we'll be actually on the ground doing these projects.
These would be jobs that would be done in fiscal year '18?
That's correct.
And I noticed that Smoke Tree is not on there. What is the PQI for Smoke Tree on the east side there, Henry? I mean, I, that street is, I think, hazardous in some ways, because people try to avoid, and so they go into the bike lane constantly, and it's a problem.
They just made a repair on that?
They did.
Last week, yeah.
We did. I don't have the information, Councilwoman Orr, but we can provide it to you. We realize it. It just, we don't have the money. Downtown area, I mean, it's really bad, others. Our proposal is the coming budget, we actually, Smoke Tree was not in our five-year plan, but it will be now. It's the fifth year that we start design. I'd love to do all the roads in the upcoming 12 months, but we just, the money isn't there.
So does the PQI help determine when roads get in?
It certainly does.
So what is the PQI of Smoke Tree?
I don't know. I will provide you the information.
Okay, I'd like to know that. I have a lot of questions.
But that is not the only factor. The factor is the volume of traffic that you get on a daily basis, you know, tourism, and so many other factors you put together. Finally, the decisions are made and it's brought to you. But I can give you the information.
Yeah, I would like to, if you could get that to me.
I get calls from Smoke Tree residents, or the people who drive on it, and I don't disagree with them, but the manhole was one of the things, and we fixed it as soon as we possibly can.
Yeah, I appreciate that, yeah.
All of them, we just, but that's among the 680 lane miles that we have.
I understand. I understand.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Steve, could you explain a little more about how this Lucidity program works? How you prioritize, like how you came up with this list versus some other streets?
Right. This list here is based off our old system, which was a, an Excel spreadsheet. And we had assigned everything, we would track it manually. This new Lucidity program, it's my understanding, I just now getting into it, so I don't fully understand its capabilities, things like that. I have appointments with the developers and the programmers with the software to go over it with me to find out what its capabilities are, how it can work, how it can benefit the city, what we can track, what we can't track, things like that. So we're hopeful that once this is implemented, and we will have to go out in field, verify all the data that's been put in by the IT department. Once it's accurate and functioning properly, we will be able to use this program to generate maps and recommendations, and we can put certain parameters into the program that say, what if we were to fix all the bad streets, you know, 40 P Q I or less? How much would it cost, given these parameters? And it'll spit out numbers for us. So we can run scenarios of, okay, do we want to fix all the worst first? Or do we want to maintain all the good good? Or whatever, or balance between both? And then it'll give us a better idea of how we can stretch our dollars and how we can make roads last even longer.
Do you do an actual field inspection in addition to using the software program?
Yes, yes. It has to be field verified because of the deterioration of asphalt's being different in different situations. You know, of course, you know, Willow Creek Road with a traffic count of over 25,000 cars a day is going to deteriorate much differently than, say, you know, a track in Granite Dells and in the houses, you know. The plows may become there, if you're lucky, once every five or 10 years in a bad snow. Whereas Willow Creek Road, they're out there every year. That kind of wear and tear on that asphalt, it just breaks it down quicker, and we have to maintain it more and, you know, do more maintenance to them.
When do you expect the Lucidity program to be fully operational?
Depends on input of the data and things like that. We're hopeful in a year to two that it will be fully functional, and we can rely on it for whatever information we can get out of it.
Okay.
I just want to add that the field visit is critical. It's not just looking at a, you know, an aerial. That's not going to, doesn't do anyone any good. We need to be out there, we know this. And furthermore, we need a geotech engineer to provide corings, because what we've discovered, what I've discovered this last year, is sometimes asbills can be misleading. Many subdivisions, unfortunately, for whatever the reason, they allow them to go in there with a thinner section. So we think we have asphalt, and when we start doing something, we're like, well, there's really no asphalt, and there's no aggregate base. And that's the importance, to really make sure, because there's been pushback on the general engineering requirements and the standards, that, you know, when we tell them, this is our structural section, this is how much asphalt and aggregate base we want, that we stick to our guns and that we don't cave in, because later on, you're going to have to mill it. And if you mill and there's nothing there, then you just took away some of our best tools to keep that asphalt good at least cost. So it's very important that we follow the standards. In the long run, it's going to save us a lot of money.
Councilman Shishka?
Thanks, Mayor, appreciate that. Henry, could I ask you a question? When we budget, we basically got a 1% streets and roads.
Yes, sir.
It's 14 million, right, per year approximately?
Correct.
Is that what we're limited to? Do we have reserves that have been planned to be utilized along with that?
No, sir, that's all the money we have. And that money, the 14 million, is for everything. All the salaries and all the equipment and all the fueling. So what actually leaves us to do road work is roughly $9 million. I wish we had reserve, but we-
And just to clarify a little further, there are other revenues in that fund, including highway user revenues, which are 3 million-ish a year, around there. There are streetlight fees, which help cover the lighting of the streets. There's some developer reimbursement, of course, partnering with the county flood control. So there is significant other revenues, but again, the primary one is the 1% streets.
The primary, and I apologize, I forgot the HIRF, which is 3 and a half million, but other ones are minor in comparison to what we have.
Councilman Shishka, there's nothing precluding you from using fund balance in the general fund to fund streets projects?
In-
If you wanted to fast-track road projects, I mean, there's nothing stopping.
If I can take opportunity of Mr. Lamar, which I'm grateful, in the past, Councilman Shishka, that has been the case in some areas that have been. So general fund can, in fact, and I'm not speaking at present time, in general, can assist some of the road road projects. When I was in central California, we were short $2 million on a project, and our board was kind enough to shift $2 million bucks. But we understand all of it, so we are trying our best, and certainly sensitive to all the needs.
Thanks, Henry.
Of course.
I have a question for you gentlemen. Shimmer Drive, it's a really bad road. Is it going to be really bad in five years?
I believe Shimmer was programmed, and we had to slide it a little bit in the schedule, but it is still on the schedule. And it's my understanding, no, it won't be really bad in five years. We're hoping it won't be really bad in three. We'll see.
Thank you.
Councilman Blair?
Thank you, Mayor. What I'd like to see next time you present or have the list, I'd like to see at the end of each one of these, what the actual process is. To see a list, I appreciate, but I have no clue whether it means total reconstruct or slurry seal, whatever you're doing to those roads, I'd like to know.
Okay, sure.
Good question, Councilman Blair, but this list is for pavement press only. This does not include capital projects such as Smoke Tree Lane or others. These are basically, is either chip sealing or micro sealing or things of that nature or, you know, mill and pave. What you're referring to are the capital project, which is not in this list.
Okay. I'd still like to see what you're doing with it.
Certainly.
Because I do have people talk to me about the cracks that are in their road, whether you're going to come in and crack fill it first and then put a chip coat on top of it. You know, I get asked those questions occasionally. But I'd also like to see the list of 2018, what our major road improvements are supposed to be, because we do have some pretty nasty roads out there, and I'd like to know what are on the list.
Okay.
This kind of dovetails on Councilman Blair's comments. You know, one of the things I think is important going forward is to manage the public's expectations of what we're doing on these roads. I don't think in each instance, people understand what's going to happen in front of their house, and then they think it's going to be a full-depth reclamation, and it's going to be this shiny new road that's going to last for 30 years. They don't understand some of these preservation or rehabilitation measures, and that the expectation, it shouldn't be as high as it is. I know the Mayor Protem and I went out in a neighborhood, and I think the residents had an expectation that was much higher than what it was, the project was. And we need to do a better job of explaining to people what preservation is, what rehabilitation is, and it's not brand-new shiny asphalt that's going to last for 30 years.
That's correct.
So.
Councilman LaZella?
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. The first, because Henry brought it up, so you have a 14 or 13, $14 million budget. You said nine is for streets, so you're saying four to five is payroll?
There's a lot of other internal charges. You know, there's utilities for streetlights, there's utilities for traffic signals, there's internal charges of the general fund, there's insurance charges, there's a lot of other operational things.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that.
Than payroll. Yeah, and we'll go into more detail of this, of course, during the annual budget workshops in May.
Okay. To one of the three gentlemen up there, and I'm going to get probably a couple of calls because I have engineer friends. Why does engineering cost so darn much? Somebody, tell me why we pay so much on engineering. Are we paying engineering fees when we redo a road, repave it? Do we pay an engineer to say, you need four inches of blacktop, come in and re-engineer the whole road?
Right now, as far as, you know, pavement preservation, we have the skills in-house to say, we're going to do a chip seal, we're going to do a crack seal. We have that skill set.
So we don't need to pay somebody to tell us what kind of pavement to use, or three or four inches?
No, no. I know, to my knowledge, I don't-
Limited, yeah.
Limited. If we come into a situation, one thing we will pay for is a geotech engineer to do a coring and to tell us-
Find out what compaction and moisture and all of that.
Yeah, how much asphalt do you have? How much aggregate base do you have? That's very important.
Sure.
Because that tells us what you have, we have to play with. We don't want to go in there and think, we're going to mill two inches, and we only have two, because the whole roadway will fall apart on you. We also need to know what type of soils it's there. If it's clay, there could be issues. So we don't want to spend money. We want to be really certain that if we spend money, it's, you know, we're going to do the best we can.
Are we able to use past engineering for redoing roads? I mean, we paid enough on the first part, didn't we?
Well, it's sort of like the geotech reports and stuff. We do collect those, but typically, you know, if you do, you know, if you do a fog seal, there's no reason to do geotech. Usually a geotech report will come in and play if you are doing a complete replace, remove and replace, or a mill fill. But typically for these other things, we won't do a geotech report, like a chip seal.
But we can use prior engineering, right?
Yeah, the reports, absolutely.
We know, we paid enough to find out where all the water lines are, or went, or-
Oh, absolutely.
Sewer, all the, I mean, we've got all the schematics, right?
We have all the asbills, right.
Okay.
Yeah. And on the most part, that's very important information. So we do have all the reports.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Orr?
Yes, so Henry, you mentioned that this is pavement preservation, and Smoke Tree is a capital project?
Yes.
Alarcon, Alarcon is a capital project?
Yes.
Goodwin is a-
Yes.
Capital project?
Yes.
Okay, so is there, is there nothing that can be done for these capital projects that are in pretty bad shape to help them until they get in, get in the queue?
I want to make sure I understand that question correctly.
Well, I am looking at a street that's in pretty bad shape, and five years, it's going to be in pretty bad shape.
Yes.
And, but until it becomes a capital project, nothing will be done to help it. Is that-
No, no, that's-
Okay, because it's not in this.
This is only for 12 months, as of July 1st.
Right.
So for the next 12 months after that, then we'll come up with a new list. Basically, this is the-
And so some of these that might be capital projects might be looked at before five years?
Yes, yes, it can be. Because when we realize a road's condition is really, needs work, but we don't have funding for capital projects, in the meantime, we are not just going to let it go. We're going to do minor work and patching here and there to make it last, if I understand
I've got a couple of questions. Basically, you said that preservation, rehabilitation, down to 40 P Q I, I think you said, was that basically Streets Department? Did that work? Reconstruction is basically work that's done outside by contracts on bids?
Yes, once it reaches a P Q I of 40 or less, you're into a reconstruction-
Yeah.
-type of scenario.
And you know, may bid those out?
Yes, that's correct.
That's not done by the Streets Department?
No, no. That's too involved for them.
Of the work that's basically rehabilitation and preservation, how much of that is done by the Streets Department? How much of that is put out on bid?
The Streets Department currently does quite an extensive crack sealing program. They have certain areas of town they go around every year and do. And then we augment that with hours. We typically, if we do a mill and fill, we'll crack seal before we pave. Typically, especially in like a chip seal situation, we'll crack seal before we pave. So we work directly with the Streets Department to make sure they don't go chip seal something that we've already contracted or are planning on chip sealing or crack sealing ourselves so that we don't duplicate and that we get as much coverage as possible.
Okay. The money for capital projects, where does that come from?
Yeah, the capital projects for streets all comes from that fund, which includes the one cent, the HIRF and the other thing.
So it's all out of Streets Fund?
Yes.
Okay. One of the things I was kind of concerned about, you know, I talked to a lot of people who say garbage trucks really tear up a lot of the roads. It seems to me that possibly solid waste ought to provide some funding into Streets Fund. Is that possible?
Again, that's perhaps more finance and legal, solid waste and enterprise fund, and we can only spend the money when it's solid waste related. However, that's a good question, Mayor. When we need to do an area where solid waste and the streets are located, they bought, the parking lot is bad, we have a lot of environmental issues and so forth, so we need some major improvement, would be cost share, because solid waste and the streets divisions of public works bought houses in one area, that they share the cost. That's how solid waste can help, but not directly on a different streets or different part of the city.
Well, it just seems to me, there's some responsibility of the solid waste to provide maybe some portion of the funding to help streets, not a particular street, just a general, you know, 1% or something like that. Is that possible?
I think part of that challenge is going to be, it's not just City Prescott's solid waste that has these garbage trucks going up and down the streets. We have private haulers that do the same, and I don't think we have any ability. I'd have to look into whether we could sort of charge like a franchise fee, for instance, to the solid waste haulers. I know a couple of years back, there was, this is right when I started, there was some discussion about that. It may be prohibited. Off the top of my head, I don't know. In other words, legislature may have prohibited that. I think that in theory, you could build a, that type of cost into the solid waste fees. In other words, the city's fees to its customers, and then transfer that into the Streets Fund for maintenance and repairs. I'm not sure to what extent that solves the problem. I don't know what, I mean, to me, you'd almost have to do some analysis or study to have data to base it on, to what extent is it the solid waste trucks, to what extent is it other trucks or vehicles in general, other solid waste trucks, other heavy vehicles. I don't know how significant or not it is, and I think you'd have to at least do some level of analysis to have something to base it on.
And just to clarify, we did look at this several years ago, and we actually, Council did adopt a fee to do that on ourselves and also our other private haulers, and then there was some legal issue that that had to get reversed. Councilman Blair may remember all that.
Yeah, it was right before I started here, so I don't remember the detail. We can look into it though. It came from the state.
Yeah.
I think there was something.
And I think, and the other problem, as Mr. Palladine pointed out, there's, commercial haulers are done by outside trash people. So if the city as a policy issue is able to and moves this onto our trash bill, we would be putting that mainly on our residents, and the other trash trucks that are paid for by commercial businesses would not be paying a share of that. And you also would have some level to prove that a trash truck tears up a road more than a delivery truck.
Well, again, I'm concerned about cost and how much money we have and how much backlog we're getting. And I know when I became mayor, where I think we were around 72, 73 million dollars in the hole. You just said we're now 80, and I know that you indicated in 10 years, we're going to go to 99 million in the hole. So it looks like we're losing ground. We're not getting things taken care of we need to. And I remember that back then, you said at 1.25%. If we had that, then we would start to actually start taking that backlog down slowly, but we start taking it down rather than having it grow. Is that correct?
You're correct me what I said at our presentation about a year, year and a half ago. If the one cent road tax was not to be extended, you went back to 0.75, we get to $100 million within 10 years. But that did pass, and it was a- to $100 million within 10 years. But that did pass, and it was extended. So we will not get to $100 million. However, slowly, we'll keep going up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Prokhor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I do remember when we thought we could beat the system and apply a special tax on garbage trucks, et cetera, to the tune of about $5 a unit a month, or something of that nature. And it was declared unconstitutional or something like that. And we got another council member out of the deal, you know. But the fact still remains that it was a, you know, there's more than just garbage trucks that tear up your streets. You could, school buses, moving vans, cement trucks, you know, Mike fans, big deals, you know, full of dirt and everything, driving around town. But, you know, you can't just pick on garbage trucks. So we've already been down there. One of the things I would like to ask Henry, though, when you say 40 being a trigger, okay, that's what I heard, 40, you know, how, the public needs to hear this on a regular basis. I don't want to beat the public up. But the fact of the matter is, they have a right to the truth. How many major streets, now I'm going to be accused of discriminating against people who live on minor streets, but how many major streets, you know, arterials, any way you want to cut it, are in that 40, you know, Bradshaw's pretty bad. That's not good, you know? And do we have enough money to save four-wheel-drive conditions, like we put up temporary icy conditions, you know? I mean, in fact, the matter is, some of those potholes and some of those conditions, especially during the rainy seasons, are pretty grim. So I think the public has a right to know. How many roads in the City of Prescott are at 40?
Steve may know the answer, Councilman Lamerson, but will be happy, and I think you have a good point, to bring out that information and share it with the public. And the other thing to pass, the pavement policy is really, is a policy decision that look to you for your giving us the ration. Some places that I have been, they've said to me, my board, that we don't like anything less than 60. Tell us what that means, okay? So we went back to them, I said, you don't want anything less than 60, it means this many dollars. Then they had to decide which way they want to go. We can certainly do that. But I believe, Steve, you have a list for that, right?
Currently, that's why we've implemented that Lucidity Program, is to better track that right now. That's what the IT Department spent all that time entering all that data. We have to go out and confirm. That's what we're hoping to do over the next year or so, is to confirm which streets are at what PQI. And then we can accurately give the mayor and council and the public what the road conditions are within the city, which roads, which PQI, what's our average is, things like that. So we don't have an exact number right now, because we're in that transition period of getting that program up and running. But it's substantial.
Here again, Steve, not, you know, I don't sit up here to try and pick on anybody. But we, the public, spent the money for the Lucidity Program. It was our tax dollars that bought the program. And the sooner the better, to where we understand what we're going into.
Absolutely.
Not, not 10 years from now, but right now.
Right.
What are we doing? So, okay?
Right, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Steve, is it safe to say that from preservation, from rehabilitation, and from capital, we have a number of projects beyond the ones we're listing that are in the same range? Is that fair, in terms of condition?
Yes, yes, I mean.
You know, and I don't want us to be operating in a bubble, that there's not some discussion with council about if we have more than we can do within a certain range, maybe they should have some say in terms of prioritization.
Absolutely.
And I think that that would make some sense. Not a free-for-all, but if we have more in this preservation area than we can do, or we have more in the rehabilitation than we can do, or the capital, and they're in the same range, there may be some reasons from a policy perspective that you'd like to see some of these move up or some of these move back. And maybe you want the discretion to start having those dialogues. I'm putting words in your mouth, but do you want that kind of discretion? Yeah?
You know, not Gene's next, and then I'll say what I'm going to say. But the mayor's right, there's a lot of roads that get traveled on all the time, and I can name you a bunch. But we can't forget the fact that this community, since I've been on council, we've taken how many lane miles away from the state of Arizona that we're now responsible for? No, we're being told that if we fix this road for you now, you're going to be responsible and paying for it. Well, it was beautiful then, and nice and smooth, but look down the road. Now, all of a sudden, the public is wanting us to take care of those roads as well. So it comes with a cost, and it is a quality of life issue, as far as I'm concerned.
Correct. And, you know, from last year to this year, we've gained almost 80 lane miles. It's quite substantial.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
That's okay. When the city manager and Councilman Shishka were talking about whether or not the council has discretion to take money out of the general fund to accelerate some of these road repair, reconstruction projects, a light bulb went on, and I'm just going to say it out loud, if we had additional revenue for our general fund, with the passage of that sales tax, we would have the discretion. Right now, I don't see that we have that choice. We don't have the discretion with the money we have in the general fund, because it's, it's all, well, a lot of it has to go to pay the PSPRS obligation. So additional revenue gives us a chance to speed up the program. And Charles, I think you were the one who made the understatement of the year, we have a lot of roads in this community that need fixing.
That was my point, Gene. Without the One Cent for the roads, where would the community be today? And where are we going to be tomorrow if we don't have the ability to finance what we need to pay for with regards to public safety, public roads, public sewer, public, you name it, the six basic services have got to come first.
Councilman Blair?
Just real quick, I appreciate Gene bringing that up, because to free up money in the general fund would be a good thing, so that we, in the budgeting process, as the people that are sitting here trying to determine what we need to happen, there's some out there that would be damnedest to spend any extra money out of the general fund and send it all to PSPRS. And frankly, I don't look at it that way. There's more needs to this community than just PSPRS.
Any other questions, Congressmen of the council? Any from the public? Go on down.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Peter Krupnick. As many of you know, I'm a professional hydrologist, so this is not my expertise. But something that has occurred to me is that we have a lot of third parties putting trenches down the middle of our road. And it's been my observation that over time, they tend to cave in, and certainly hasten the degradation of our roadways. And so I'm wondering if these utilities need to be posting bonds, or some way for us to recoup the damage that occurs?
Thank you.
Just add, we do have franchise agreements with APS, Censure Link, and the rest of them. They do, anyone working within the right-of-way needs to come in for a permit. So we are aware. We have tightened up our standard section, meaning when they trench, we're asking for a more stout structural section, which is your AB and your AC. And we do our best, because, again, there's resources. You're right, there's a lot of saw cutting of existing pavement out there. And per our franchise agreement, we can't stop them. However, we try to watch them as close as possible. Now, I'm not going to lie, sometimes that's not possible, because with all the jobs we have, we don't have enough inspectors. But we have tightened up our specification and our trench configuration. So they're not putting back just two inches and, two inches of AB and AC. You know, we want good compaction, and we want a very good stout section. So it won't fail.
But you have city inspections done on the work that's done by the third party, right?
When we can.
Yeah. When you say, when we can, does that mean we have them scheduled, we don't do them, or we don't have the people to do them, or they don't tell us that they need to come by and do the inspection, or what?
There are some instances where they don't call in the inspection, and we don't know anything's going on until after the fact. There are some instances where we are just shorthanded. We can only cover so many jobs in a day. We try and make it at least a quick check of what they're doing, but sometimes it's not always possible.
Any other questions, Congressmen of the council, or from the public? Okay, thank you. We'll go on to the next item.
Item B, unit allocations of alternative water for residential development.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. The presentation this afternoon is on unit allocations of alternative water for residential development. If you had a chance to leaf through the material in the agenda packet, there's quite a bit of backup material. And I won't be going through that, it's about 38 pages of material. And, you know, before this particular item was placed on the study session, the Council Water Issues Committee discussed it, heard it, et cetera, for a couple of meetings. So there has been some awareness built on the part of the committee members, and this is a continuation of the process today. So right from the outset, I'd like to be very specific with respect to the terminology of alternative water, so everyone is either reminded of or understands, if they're not familiar with this, just what we're talking about. Alternative water, first bullet point, is distinct from what we call grandfathered groundwater, pumped within the Prescott Active Management Area. So alternative water is a category of renewable resource within the city's assured water supply portfolio. So right off the bat, a distinction between grandfather groundwater, which is a particular category, which is controlled by the state in particular ways, and alternative water, which is the renewable resource. In our presentation and discussion this afternoon, we will be talking about alternative water, that renewable resource. Council is aware that at the present time, we have, the city has two primary sources of alternative water. And those are surface water, which are, which is stored in the Washtenawill Lake reservoirs, and treated wastewater effluent. Both of those sources are what we call recharged and recovered for use. Recovered for use means from recovery wells. And in the last decade, we have been expanding and will continue to expand what we call recovery wells in the proximity of the airport, which is where the treated wastewater effluent and surface water are recharged to the aquifer. An important point is that the city must serve all new subdivisions with alternative water, not groundwater. So even though there are a lot of historical subdivisions out there, lots that were created in the last 100 years, those are eligible, if they're subdivisions, to be served with grandfather groundwater. Again, that's not what we're talking about today. If a development proposal comes to the city council for a new subdivision, the city must have alternative water available to serve that new subdivision. That quantity must be available, and that quantity must be recognized by the Arizona Department of Water Resources. As you're aware, because you have seen water management policies placed on the agendas, you have seen water service agreements and so forth on your agenda, council agenda. Since the year 2000, the city has what we call allocated, quote unquote, a 100-year assured supply of alternative water to new residential development that would not otherwise be eligible to be served with grandfather groundwater. And so those, since 2000, those unit allocations have been 0.35 acre foot per dwelling unit for single family, and 0.25 acre foot per dwelling unit for multifamily. Multifamily being apartments, et cetera. Each of the unit allocations, the 0.35 and the 0.25, includes a 1/10 of an acre foot markup of alternative water intended to be available to support development of businesses necessary to provide goods and services to the new residents. So going back, you know, whatever it is, almost 20 years ago, when this region, this area was declared to be out of safe yield, and so a new set of rules and a new status was imposed upon the area of the Prescott Active Management Area, all kinds of things changed. And you've heard before that some of those rules were that, in the past, we could just sign contracts with people to serve them, we could approve things as a city. We didn't have to wonder where that water was going to come from, was going to be pumped out of the ground in the city's water production facility. And all of that changed. And a significant change was now, as I said, we have to support new development with what we call alternative water, a renewable resource. And then what we have to do to support that development, we break it down into units. And if it's residential development, these are the unit allocations. And those unit allocations for residential were based upon two major assumptions. Number one, the occupancy per dwelling unit, how many people live in our houses statistically. And secondly, the gallons per capita per day of water use. And a rule of thumb back in that era was 150 gallons per capita per day, something like that. And as we know, the occupancy for, per dwelling unit has been decreasing as our population has aged. And the more retirement facilities that are built in this community, that occupancy per dwelling unit continues to go down. We can attest to that by school enrollment and all kinds of other indicators and so forth. But those were the assumptions, and those are the realities. So why are we here talking to you today? Why has the Water Issues Committee had this discussion for a couple of months successively? Well, as you know very well, the balance of what we call unreserved alternative water from current renewable resources has been depleted. We have some substantial amounts of alternative water tied up in reservations, Deepwater Ranch reservation, the reservation for tracts of land that are residentially zoned within the city limits, and so forth. But the unreserved balance is very small. The second bullet is that the actual annual usage, the demand, the real use, for the majority of the city's 23,000 water customers is well below the present unit allocations and in a sustained downtrend. I will show you that downtrend figure in a moment. Certainly, water conserving plumbing codes are now in effect. We know now in our community, we've seen it, we have it, each of us have it, many of us have it. Water Smart Landscaping, it's widely used, it's accepted, behavior has been changed. We're no longer trying to emulate the Midwest and front and backyards that look green, of turf, that require a tremendous amount of water for this climate. We have a water conservation rate structure that was adopted, you know, over 10 years ago. And that is in place, has been in place for that, for that period of time. That has substantially reduced water use by residential customers. It's a conservation tiered structure that the difference in rates between the tiers accelerates. So if you use an extreme amount of water, you pay a much higher cost per thousand gallons of water, and that's a conservation rate. Now, the last bullet point in this particular slide is extremely important. The 0.35 and 0.25 unit allocations per residential unit include a markup of 1/10 of an acre foot. And this markup was intended to provide a water resource for a variety of businesses that would come in and want to set up and provide goods and services to our new residents. And we don't track those minor businesses unless they use over five acre feet, which is a pretty substantial amount. But think about it. We have a couple of super Walmarts, we have fry supermarkets. We have a couple of Super Walmarts, we have Frye's supermarkets, we have mall stores. One might reasonably say that this community has not only built, but overbuilt, in a sense, a capacity of commercial venues to serve our customers that has a lot of remaining capacity. So if you walk into a Walmart at any time, you don't see people lined up and all the registers open. The same thing at Frye's Food Store and so forth. This, this community could substantially increase in population and not have to build another Super Walmart or Frye's supermarket or Safeway or whatever. There is capacity. That capacity remains to serve more. So it brings up a question. If we've been marking up all these years, those unit allocations for residential, and if the community, commercial sector has built additional capacity way beyond what we need now, then why would we, as a city, continue to mark up these residential units if, in fact, we don't have a lot, a lot of water left? So this is a fairly dramatic slide, a figure that shows that per capita water use has substantially decreased since the year 2000. I would submit to you that the behavior has been changed and the, and the lower unit gallons per capita per day is ingrained. I don't think that with the conservation, water tiers, I don't think with the family sizes, with the lifestyle changes, with the region and so forth, with the way we live now, as opposed to way, way we might have lived in previous decades, I don't think there's any reason to believe that this, that this particular curve is going to have a dramatic upturn.
Craig, real quick, what's, what was the anomaly in 2002?
Well, that was ascribed to a drought year, and I think that's probably right. I actually came to work in the year 2002, and you remember, we had the fire that year. It was tremendously dry. And I don't think that the behavior had quite been changed at that time. I do recall that people were watering trees, you know, they had hoses running on trees and things like that. And that, that comment actually was made by a member of the Citizens Water Advocacy Committee, and I think it's probably accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Down at the bottom of this particular slide, what you'll notice is that, okay, now let's compare the .35 for single family and .25 for multifamily. Here's the actual use. And even with that markup of .1 on the .35 and 25, here's the actual use for the five years of 2010 to 2015. Single family, we've been allocating at .35. The actual use from utility billing is .17. It's about half of it. Multifamily, .09. We have been allocating at .25. And so, you know, even if we reduce the .35, take the one-tenth markup off and compare .25, the single family is still below that substantially, .17 versus .25. For multifamily, it would be .09 versus .15. And look at the amount of gallons. 55,000 gallons a year is a substantial amount of water, and that's our average use across our residential customers. So Water Resource Division has made some specific, or made some specific recommendations to the Water Issues Committee. The Council of Water Issues Committee referred those recommendations and this particular topic to our presentation this afternoon. And these are the same recommendations in the council packet, that the Water Resource Management Division is recommending, number one, that we, the city, define, quote, "water efficient residential development." Specifically define it and establish new unit allocations for qualifying construction. We are suggesting single family be .20 and multifamily be .12 acre feet. And if, again, if you look at the gallons, that's still quite a bit. The second recommendation are, consists of, or presents the attributes or definition of water efficient residential development. What is it? How would we define it? How would it, how would it appear in our water management policy? Effectively, how would it be enforced? Well, we are proposing that it be applicable to new preliminary and final subdivision plaits and replats of master plan communities served by alternative water, but not individual lot splits, individual houses on existing units or tracts. Okay, so why is that? Well, what you find with the significant subdivisions, major developments, master plan communities, is that they're very attuned and as a deliverer of product, they're very attuned to what we're talking about here today. And second bullet point under number two, there is in fact a specification, and it's an EPA WaterSense New Home specification, for single family homes and town homes, that does have applicability and can be easily certified by a builder and then inspected independently to assure compliance. So we don't have to invent a new system for the city of Prescott. It's really already out there. It's used nationally. We have two major builders in this area who do the larger developments, and they are, they are certified WaterSense partners or builders. Another builder who wants to get in on this particular type of construction can get certified and so forth, so the opportunity is there. With multifamily projects, we made a cutoff of 10 dwelling units. So over 10, we would deem those multifamily projects to be WaterSense smart, because when you, when you think about it, with the plumbing codes, et cetera, et cetera, basically, multifamily apartments are very water efficient. Each of those units doesn't have their own front yard. Each of those doesn't have their own irrigation. There is a sharing of common areas and so forth, and so there is an economy of scale there, and there's a savings there. On smaller projects, a couple of multifamily units, well, that may be a higher-end multifamily development on, on a piece of property with per capita or per residents or per unit, a lot more water use. And the difference would not be that significant. Fourth bullet point is that common areas, medians and parkways are in fact, as we speak here today, they're required to be zero-scape in accordance with our Land Development Code and state requirements for active management areas. So there is a requirement already there, and what we're saying is include that in the definition of water efficient residential development. And the last note on the page is not, it's for a note, it's not something necessarily for consideration or not for consideration at this time, and that is, if in fact, we are proposing these new unit allocations, and they're a lot more stringent with respect to water use, then if a particular customer uses more than the allocation, well, they ought to pay for that. I mean, that's just the way it goes. The, you know, even at .2 acre foot per dwelling unit in a water efficient residential development, that's 65,000 gallons a year. And so if the property is landscaped and so forth, it's unlikely that the average customer or average person who moves into one of these water efficient residential developments is going to use a whole lot of water. But if they do, if they leave their faucets running, if they do laundry every day, if they do something that leads to extreme water use, then we will be able to, and we will suggest that, that there be a particular water rate for this type of development, but that would not be considered until the next update of the city utility rate. So we're not proposing to bring that into the program at the present time. Number three, we are recommending that the unit allocations for residential development not meeting the water efficient definition above that I, that I talked about. And of course, that would be lest the one-tenth of an acre foot markup remain at .25 and .15 for single family and multifamily. Number four, specifically with respect to the markup, we are recommending that it be discontinued. The commercial capacity is there for the support businesses in the community to serve a tremendous amount of new residents. And what we will do is track the new demand for such businesses, additional businesses which may crop up, because they require a new water meter. So we will flag that in the database, and we'll know how many of these businesses of a type supporting new development are being established, and we can, and propose to provide a summary to the council in conjunction with the annual water report presented in March of every year, at which time any recommendations for further policy adjustments can be made if applicable. So the tools that we, analytical tools, database tools, tracking tools and things like that, not tracking individuals per se, but really talking about water consumption here, we have those tools, and we propose to maximize the use of those tools so we can better manage our alternative water. Now, the fifth recommendation is a very important one. We are proposing that the conservation and other savings accrued to date in the city's water portfolio, in alt-water, not be mined to support additional development. Leave that cushion in the water portfolio. Don't, you know, don't turn around and say, we can build 1,500 more houses with the water we've got, so get rid of that cushion. The cushion is what we call headroom, which is the difference between the overall water, volume of water allocated and that actually being used. In other words, for all those years, again, we allocated a .35 and 25, but as you saw on the previous slide, the actual usage is .17 and .09. So that cushion is about, estimated about 410 acre foot. Specific recommendation, leave it in the water portfolio. If nothing else, it's an insurance policy that if the consumption doesn't quite come in as we have projected, if something turns around, first of all, we'd see it on an annual basis, but we would not be over obligating ourselves with respect to water. We'd still have that cushion in there. And the sixth recommendation is really the outcome which is desired today, and that would be for the council to provide direction to place a resolution amending the city water management calendar year policy, calendar year 17 policy, implementing the revised unit allocations on the agenda for your voting meeting of May 9. If they're not comfortable with that, if their public comments, which are unresolved, it can be a subsequent meeting, but we would certainly recommend moving this along. So in summary, the new unit allocations which are being suggested, number one, will make more efficient use of the city's alternative water, again, a renewable resource, and we know from Leslie Grazer's reports that that's been reduced by shortfalls in the city's surface water, recharged to climate, and treated wastewater shortfall, because our population growth has been lower consistently than projected. Secondly, and notably, these new, new unit allocations provide an opportunity to direct more of the dwindling supply of unreserved alternative water to non-residential projects with economic development benefits. So you may recall, and certainly you'll see a marked up copy of the 2007 water management policy, but in there, because that amount of unreserved alternative water has dwindled so far down, the council last December approved that 17 policy that says, we're going to move 50 acre feet out of a reservation for unsubdivided residential tracts and move that into what we call our general pool or water budget every year, so it's available for allocation. If we change the unit allocations, we'll be making the alternative water we have go farther, so then, from a management standpoint, highest and best use, the council can give consideration to directing more of that water perhaps to non-residential projects with economic development benefits, instead of trying to squeeze out water a couple of years down the road. So we could create another modest reservation and have that available for economic development benefits and have flexibility, and that's pretty important. The other bullet points, I don't need to repeat. I think I covered all of those except for the last one. And each of you, and those in the audience and those at home, will have to make up their own minds on this, but certainly I'm suggesting to you what my mind says, and that is, the changes that are being proposed will neither lead to accelerated housing development over the short term, nor necessarily result in a significantly higher long-term build-out population, which according to the general plan assumes importation of water from Big Chino subdivision. Ample opportunities and checkpoints will continue to exist to effectively monitor and manage growth. So let's break that down a little bit. What would cause the short term, a short-term acceleration in housing development? A robust market, demand, the economy. What do we know about Prescott's economy? Not Phoenix's economy, Prescott's economy. What we know about Prescott's economy is that if the annual growth rate in Phoenix in a great year is eight or 10%, ours is not going to be over 2%. That's just the way it is. It's just the way it is. If you talk to the developers, they'll say, one of the significant limiting factors with respect to building housing in Prescott is the availability of a skilled workforce. During boom times, those framers are down in the boom cities. They're not here. They can't get them, the masons, the cement finishers. If you don't believe me, talk to people in development industry. So that's a check and a balance right there. No matter what the economy is, sure, you know, at the peak in 2000, you know, in early 2000, we were doing 525 building permits. In the recession, it was a fraction of that. What are we now? It's nowhere near 525, and I think there's probably a leveling off there with respect to actually how much development can occur in this area because of those skilled trades and the lack of those, and we don't have a long-term built-in supply. When the economy goes down, these people left, and they did leave, and they won't come back. The general plan, the higher long-term build-out population, it assumes importation of water from the Big Chino subdivision, sub-basin, excuse me. Well, there are a lot of different viewpoints on the Big Chino project. As you know, we're in a scientific phase of analyzing potential effects on what's happening with groundwater, the connection of Big Chino sub-basin and extraction of groundwater in that sub-basin, the Upper Verde River. And, you know, the council approved a three-year modeling contract, and so it's going to be the early 2020s before we even have the discussion of the Big Chino sub-basin and what the potential impacts may be, and if the impacts are manageable, what those costs, associated costs are, and how that relates to rates. So I would submit to you that through project analyses, capital project authorization, financing, annual budgets, community input, the views of this elected body, the views of the citizens of Prescott, there are indeed ample opportunities and checkpoints to effectively monitor, monitor and manage growth. Again, you know, we're talking about changing unit allocations, and at any time, if in fact, the elected leadership thinks something has arrived, there is an indication of that, we change the water management policy, and that's how, one of those valves, if you will. In terms of a public process, as I mentioned, the Water, Council Water Issues Committee has heard and discussed this topic several times. To date, we are now on April 25th, today's study session. In the two Water Issues Committee meetings, the committee did in fact allow public comment, and there were some good, good public comments. We are suggesting that today, and on May 9th, or on a date that the council may feel comfortable with, we would propose a brief presentation, another opportunity for public comment and consideration of a resolution to amend the water management policy. consideration of a resolution to amend the water management policy to implement the revised unit allocations. That concludes my presentation. If the council has any questions, we can certainly address those.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mayor. Craig, thank you for a more than thorough presentation, and thank you for your stewardship when we were talking about some of these issues, water issue. And the same compliments and thank yous go to my fellow council that sat with water issues. What I do think is through the general plan and through the overwhelming vote of the public, this elected body has chosen a rational approach to try and manage the water that we actually have to manage for a longer-term benefit of the community as a whole. And I would strongly recommend to my fellow council members that they look at what we're actually making a recommendation of and thoroughly understand it, and as we move forward, I think it's a good plan.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Going back to slide number six, your first page of recommendations, the definition of water-efficient residential development. When you refer to EPA WaterSense New Home Specifications, what water-saving features do those specifications include?
Councilwoman, I can certainly get into that. That was included in the packet. And it's, let's see. I'm looking at 13 pages of specifications of the criteria defining their WaterSense program for water-efficient new homes. It addresses indoor water use, including plumbing, plumbing fixtures and fittings, appliances, and other water-using equipment. So it's not just that the plumbing is a particular way, it's when the home is sold, it has appliances which are water-efficient. Typically, they're going to be energy star efficient as well. Outdoor water use, and this is front yard, including landscaping, design, irrigation systems that are installed must meet the criteria and specification, and then there is, there is a major criteria in terms of homeowner education. And so it goes from there. The specific performance criteria, enumerate leaks, service pressures, hot water delivery systems, how hot water, how much hot water is generated, is it circulated all the time, et cetera, et cetera. The installed appliances and fixtures, toilets and faucets and showerheads and so forth, other equipment such as evaporative cooling, water softeners, drinking treatment systems, and on and on.
Okay. Well, thank you. I don't think the general public probably took the time to look at all that, but that leads me to my next question about rainwater harvesting for use of outdoor landscaping.
Right.
What I would be in favor of doing is allowing an additional allocation credit in some fraction for developments that install water harvesting systems with the building itself, and their use and monitoring could be inspected just like we're going to be inspecting the EPA WaterSense features.
Right. Good point, Councilwoman. And Councilman Blair brought this particular topic up at the Water Issues Committee, and we thought about that and looked at that, and there were a couple of things which came to mind or aspects of that, I think, that we can talk about. Number one, the city does offer a rebate for rainwater harvesting, so that's available. Secondly, a homeowner will receive, if in fact they want to use water for outside irrigation, they will get a break on the utility bills because they will use that amount that's harvested and not be using potable water. On the other, on the other hand, there's a performance requirement here, and we're not going, from a utility management standpoint, we're not going to be able to really determine what the impact of rainwater harvesting is because we don't know how they'll be using it, whether they'll be using it, and many will, whether we properly maintain and so forth, maintained and so forth. So there's really no way to quantitatively get at that. So our recommendation was that with the rebates, with the potable water bill savings, that that should be sufficient, and then, I think, as Councilman Blair might explain his own words, you recall that at Antelope Crossings, when that was brought up, the developer agreed as an exaction of sorts in the development approval process to do that, which they will deliver and which we will not have to deal with with respect to an allocation. So I think that that's how it was addressed at the Water Issues Committee and might be arguably an alternative way to accomplish what you're suggesting.
Well, I don't disagree with you, but I think for a developer who's willing to build a house with that type of infrastructure included in the price of the home, they should receive the credit of some sort for their acre foot. In other words, they would be able to build extra homes.
And that's exactly the point. Rainwater harvesting is notable. The big impact here, or the big benefit, the significant benefit, is being able to build more units, and that's where the developer, I think, is rewarded.
Well, I think the reward should be in terms of tangible benefit, installing that rainwater system, selling that home, and then having additional water allocation credits.
Well, that would be, you know, that would be a matter for the council if you want to tweak that unit allocation by some amount to formalize that.
Okay.
Councilwoman Ohr.
Thank you, Mayor. Craig, great job. This is, I remember when we first sat down a couple of months ago with Leslie and yourself, and we were so far from the reality when we were allocating .35, the use was actually .17. So it just seems common sense to put it closer to reality at the .20. Same thing for the multifamily, we're allocating the .25, and it's just so much less than that, the .09. That's amazing. And so to get it closer to reality, I think this is, this is an excellent step in the right direction.
Thank you. And Councilman Chiski pointed out to Water Issues Committee that it is still conservative to an extent here.
That's right.
That if our single family is, you know, .17, and we're allocating at .2, there's .03, and the same thing on the multifamily side.
Good job. Thank you.
Councilwoman Blair.
Yes, thank you, Craig. And Jean, thanks for the comments because I think that's a valuable, valuable statement that, anyway, I think it was also a valuable statement that it wasn't government that demanded at Antelope Point that they do this. It was a recommendation. And asking them if they would consider putting harvest barrels in the front and backyard, they actually put it in their final plat that stated that they would do that. So I got to give Ron James and those folks a great hand. And what that meant to me more so than anything is a simple fact, it's a savings to our public. We don't, we don't have to treat as much water coming out of the well field, we don't have to pump as much water coming out of the well field, therefore saving money on chemicals, saving money on electricity. There are some huge benefits in having that done, but I do like the idea of maybe a small credit going to the developer that enacts those types of things.
Well, to that point, if there is a consensus, and of course, we haven't heard from all council members, but we could certainly design that. What we would need to do is figure out how many gallons we're really talking about on an annual basis. If it's, if it's 5,000 gallons, then we can adjust that unit factor to reflect it, and that might be a good, you know, a good one. If you have 1,000 gallons rainwater cistern and you fill it up five times, then that'd be 5,000 gallons.
Councilwoman Zell.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Craig, I'd like to see, to repeat Jean and Steve, maybe some verbiage on May 9th, some, whatever that number, I'm not a counter of these things, but whatever you think that it might be rewarding that, that developer, that builder, X amount equals X amount, something that we could consider.
Well, Councilman Chiski's been up twice.
I've been up twice.
Got it off twice, so I guess he's.
I guess, I guess my biggest concern would be that, okay, you've got the barrels, the barrels go in when the development is built, and then it's up to the individual homeowner to maintain the barrel, and to maintain the system of the barrel, of the water in the barrel.
Maybe it's not a barrel, per se, that's susceptible to the elements, maybe it is underground cistern, something of that nature.
Yeah.
That we all, that, I know, Steve, what is your warranty lifetime on that one you got on your house? 10, 15, 20 years?
Mine's different. Mine's concrete and it's six foot under the ground, and it's 1,500 gallons, so.
But I mean, what's the lifetime on that, you think?
I think as long as you use it, you know, and drain it, I mean, they do become rather pungent smelling after a while if you don't use them, but I will tell you that they're a great way to utilize the roof water.
And I don't think I'm talking about barrels, because you're right, Steve. Barrels are one thing that can be removed and not be used, but maybe it's something that's, that's more permanent.
Okay, thanks, Rick.
That's all I had, Mayor.
Okay, before we go to a resolution or consensus on a resolution, I'll go ahead and take three people from the public for two minutes.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Howard Mechanic Prescott. Regarding the rainwater harvesting, I would suggest that be handled as a separate measure for various reasons. I have rainwater harvesting system I installed, and I don't use it because I have xeriscaping, and I don't need water. So if we're encouraging people to put in rainwater harvesting systems, are we encouraging them to use water outside their homes? The point I wanted to address was multifamily, and I appreciate this proposal. I think it has a good balance of bringing on conservation and also allowing some additional development. I disagree with what Mr. McConnell said, that there won't be any additional development. I think it's clear there will be more allowed with the existing amount of water. It may take more years, you may have the same growth rate, but we will be able to do it for more years, but I do support this as a good balance. Individual meters on residential use is necessary, including multifamily. Just imagine if you're living in multifamily and you had no meter, you wouldn't be as concerned about conservation. The facts are that multifamily units that have individual meters save between 15 and 20 percent of their water usage compared to similar units that are not individually metered. And I appreciate that this proposal talks about future development.
You got 30 seconds.
And I would like to see that in there. I would like to see an incentive for smaller developments under 10 units. There is no incentive for them to do that, and I would also like to see that the impact fees be less for people who put in individual units, meters. They should be 15 to 20 percent less, they will use 15 percent to 20 percent less, so they should not pay equal amount of impact fees.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Leslie Hoyt. I just, overall, I support this. I went to all the meetings to call the notes, informed all the members of the Citizens' Water Advocacy Group about what was going on. I do wish, Mayor, that sometimes you would allow for more public comment if, maybe there's not that many people that want to speak today, but this is an important issue and the timing gets kind of scrunched. Originally, Councilman Blair asked for a two-hour session for this discussion, which probably we didn't need two hours. The one point I want to make about the rainwater harvesting, I agreed actually with Mr. McConnell that it's hard to measure and therefore I'm not really in favor of giving extra housing for rainwater harvesting. The thing is, you can install the system, whether it's a barrel or it's underground, but we can't make the homeowner use it, and therefore I think it's a little hard to quantify. And if we do require rainwater harvesting, which at the meeting, C-WAG did, we hope to have rainwater harvesting, it's, the homeowner education part is really important, so there needs to be some kind of allowance or some kind of specification or urging of homeowner education, whether it's seminars at the, at the subdivision, or manuals, or something like that, and C-WAG would definitely be willing to help with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll take one more comment. Apparently, we don't need anybody else, so I want to thank the Water Committee for working on this and for Greg McCall working on this. I know it took quite a bit of effort, a lot of analysis and research. I personally think that we need to move along with the, with the resolution, so if I have a consensus of the council, we'll bring it forward on the night.
Ben.
Okay, thank you. Next item.
See legislative update?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Taylor Goodman from the City Manager's Office, and I'll go quickly because I know we're running short on time. The first bill on our legislative update this week is SB 1430, which dealt with occupational licenses. We talked about this probably about six weeks back. It wouldn't affect anything that's currently happening in the city, but we were concerned about it because of the local control issue. Luckily, it was pulled off the agenda just yesterday. I spoke with Senator Fan this morning, and she said that she would have definitely been a no vote if it had made it on the floor for a vote. So that's good news for now. The next is HB 2477, the Civil Asset Forfeiture Bill. That was signed by the governor about two weeks back. Just want to give you a, to close a loop on that one. The heart and cancer workers' comp bills, they have not been scheduled for a floor vote yet, which is kind of surprising. And I spoke with Barry this morning as well, and they're both kind of up in the air as far as if they'll make it to a floor vote or not. If they do make it to a vote, if the Senate President allows for it, it's believed that they'll pass because they've counted the votes and seem to have them. But it's one of those things that could be either the last thing voted on or the last thing that's decided not to vote on this session. So we'll keep track of it and let you know as we go forward, but it's up in the air for now. There were two bills that I talked about last time from Senator Fan that had to do with workers' comp, 1407 and 1332, both tried to mitigate the effects of the heart and cancer bills. Unfortunately, 1407 is now dead, she told me, which would have had, what has to do with directing the care of employees, so it's deciding what healthcare providers they can go to and all that to reduce costs for workers' compensation. The second bill, SB 1332, that she was running, is still good and expected to pass, and that's good news. That one has to do with allowing for full and final settlement of claims, which reduces costs over the long run. So that is good news on that. More good news, SB 1063 from Senator Lesko, the PSPRS risk pooling tier three. It's good to go. It passed through the House. It's awaiting some Senate action on some amendments. It's expected to pass without a problem, go to the governor. There shouldn't be any problem getting that one signed and through, so that's really good news. And finally, as always, the governor's budget. There, there's still no final word on this. It's, the legislature still does not support the way that it's structured with recapturing the TPT to use for university bonding and operations. So with that, it's believed that they're working on a compromise which will hold cities harmless, meaning they won't take any of the shared revenues due to counties and cities. So that's good news. We just haven't heard of, of the details of that yet, so we're still waiting for it. And speaking with Barry, he expects it could be another week or two until that point. That's the only thing that's holding up the budget. And once the budget's passed, it's basically the last day of the, of the session, they'll wrap up a few more bills, and that'll be it. So there's still some things going on, we're still keeping track of these issues, especially the budget and the workers' comps bills, but other than that, it's, it's going pretty well. Unless you have any questions, that's all I have for you.
Questions, comments from the council?
Well, I'll just make a comment. I'm really happy about the pooling bill that that's going through. That's great.
Absolutely.
It's really good news.
Any comments from the public on legislative agenda? Okay, I want to thank everybody for coming. We're going to adjourn here and. We're going to adjourn here and start with our voting meeting in about 10 minutes. This means adjourn.